It is now 5:00 P.M. And we are ready to start the Select Board meeting, August 8th, 2022. And the first thing we're going to do is add or delete any items from the agenda. Anything you want to add or delete?
No.
No? Okay, we're good on that. For announcements, I want to welcome PEG TV. This is the first time we've recorded our meeting with PEG TV, so welcome. Glad you're here. Thank you for coming. The rules of procedure and the agenda are available for anyone that walks in. Under announcements, Sarah, do you have any announcements? Then I have three announcements. Again, I'll hand these to you. The first announcement is from Servi Vermont, active shooter trainings available. This is from Stephanie Burke, Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Vermont's Department of Public Safety is offering a new public safety initiative, Servi Vermont, to educate and empower Vermonters with actions they can take to protect themselves and family members if they are confronted with an active shooter or violent situation. The trainings are available around the state during the month of August and are a combination of see something, say something, run, hide, fight, and stop the bleed. The second announcement, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission will be hosting a FEMA-sponsored virtual tabletop exercise on Wednesday, August 24th, from noon, 12:00 noon to 4:00 P.M. With both in-person and virtual options to participate. This exercise will focus on an active shooting incident at a school that results in mass casualty in mass facility. And mass fatality. And the last one is from a previous Select Board, and we kind of inherited it, is the Rutland Ramp, R-A-M-P. Ramp is an acronym for Rutland Regional Asset Mapping Project. This project is completed. And Amanda O'Connor, who originally worked on this project when she was with the RRPC, and Bill Moore, who was with the Town of Brandon, they're making a connection this week to talk about the ramp. I recommend Menden residents check it out online. It's Rutland Ramp, that's R-U-T-L-A-N-D-R-A-M-P dot com. And you click on anything in Menden, and there are several places that come up. And it also does all 27 counties, towns in the Rutland region. The reason they're going to look at this, and Amanda was looking into writing a grant to maintain this mapping project, otherwise it becomes stagnated and nothing happens to it. So it needs to be updated. So this is just to keep the Select Board and residents in the loop. It's information only. And I'll keep you updated as I hear from Amanda. There's what?
One announcement.
All right, the next announcement, the Stormwater Master Plan has started with Fitzgerald Environmental Associates LLC. This project is 100% grant funded. All right, next on your agenda is the signing of orders. I'll make a motion to approve orders for August 3rd, 2022, the amount of $9,319.12 and $742.40.
Second?
You have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 25th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we are now open for public comment. I do not see any public here. We're using the aisle 15 minutes for that, so we can open that back up. Under business, first thing under A on our agenda is the paving issue, but Bill, I don't know if you have an update for us? You do not have an update? All right. All right, on B, we have the Transportation Alternative Grant, Menden Route 4 Project Assignment of Municipal Project Manager. Originally, when we went through the paperwork, we had Devin Neary that was going to be working with us on this project. Devin has since taken over the Executive Director of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and in his place, Stephanie Burke of RRPC will be working on this project. So I'll make a motion to appoint Stephanie Burke for the Transportation Alternative Grant, Menden Route 4 Project Assignment of Municipal Project, as our municipal project manager.
I will second that.
Any of us in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. C, we have security at meetings, and you're going to take the lead in this?
Yes. Okay. So I requested that the Town Administrator Sarah Tolle reach out to the Sheriff's Department and the Constable to have a meeting so we can discuss security at meetings with respect to the recent disorderly conduct that we've been experiencing. And the Sheriff Fox has agreed to, when available, to send one of his deputies to be here at the meetings. And Constable Leamy Carter has agreed to help out when he can. He made some helpful suggestions for us, which are related to something else that we'll discuss further down in business with respect to disorderly conduct. Let's see, we all, Sheriff Fox and Constable Carter recommended that we install security cameras, one for the hallway and one for the parking lot. And on further discussion with the office staff and some other legal considerations for the VLCT, we will not record sound within the office, but within the parking lot, we will, if this goes forward, that is. So it's just something to be discussed. And then, let's see. Right. And also, out of this meeting, discussing security at town meetings was, contacting Tom Leabord of PEG TV, which has happened. We also discussed why it is that low-level offenses such as disorderly conduct generally don't follow through, and it's because the courts are backlog significantly, and they can't clean down lesser offenses, and so, which is related to the disorderly conduct ordinance that they recommended. And that is all I had to say about security at meetings at this time.
Let me just go over this. The hallway, you said, was video only?
Yes. And the reason for that is because PII is often discussed, and also personal financial matters by townspeople often discussed, that could be heard in that situation. And so legally, it doesn't seem possible to actually record sound in the hallway.
And how is this activated, or is it on? Is it turned on in the morning, turned off at the end of the day, or how does it?
It's something that's running continuously, and it would be wireless, and it would be recorded, the information recorder on the base, and it would just, you could set it, depending on the size of the memory for your base system that records the video, it would be rewritten over approximately every two weeks.
So storage is for two weeks?
Two weeks, depending on the model you get. Sometimes it's gross, sometimes it's small.
And if there's something you want to keep on that, you can store it.
Right.
So wireless, it can be installed without a license, am I correct?
I was going to propose, and actually I didn't. I'd like to amend what I was saying. So I actually wanted to propose that we acquire $500 so we can purchase video cameras from the local Home Depot, and we can install them ourselves. It's as simple as connecting it to the Wi-Fi and plugging the base into the wall outlet. And the camera can be installed inside and one outside. And then every computer terminal within the office, Sarah, Nancy, and whoever else desires would have access to it, so it wouldn't be the one person controlling it either.
So that was my next question, is the cost. The $500 would cover both cameras in the hallway?
Both cameras in the base.
The one in front of the building looking at the parking lot, which is something we needed for a long time.
Right.
Is that like a ring which is motion-activated, or is that running all the time?
Running continuously.
Continuously?
Yep.
And that's wireless too? Same thing?
The only drawback with going to wireless is if the Wi-Fi goes down, then we don't have the cameras.
Right. And again, who has access to both cameras?
All the office staff.
All the office staff. And can anyone from the public request?
No, it's not. There's no public information being reported here. And so I have. I'm going to print it out. Give me just a second here. I have a copy for you. Here's all the legal considerations raised by VLCT. Lot of information here, but if I could summarize. With respect to recording of verbal communications, there are no specific statutes in Vermont addressing the interception of audio communications, with the exception that the Vermont Supreme Court has held it surreptitious, electronic monitoring of communications in a person's home is unlawful invasion of privacy, but there's no expectation of privacy within our lobby. So in the end, the VLCT recommends that we still consult with the attorney, the higher guardians matters. I've contacted him by phone, by email, and we haven't received a response.
Getting back to the camera, looking at the parking lot, is that both audio and video?
Yes.
Or it is?
Only because the town's business is not being conducted in the parking lot.
And, Brian, you've priced this out, and $500 is enough for this purchase?
Sufficient, yeah. Yeah, I don't expect to spend the full $500, but in case we need ancillary material like cables and mounting hardware.
Okay, and this is a DUI project?
Yes, and Nancy would like the camera to be mounted, you know, more or less above her desk, pointing at the lobby, at Sarah's door and the entrance.
Okay, so they're fine with it then?
That's, yeah, I've discussed this with Sarah and Nancy, and they're both fine with it. Is that correct?
So at this point in time, you're still waiting to hear back from the attorney?
Yes. I was hoping to hear back from the meeting. If I did, I was going to make a motion, but I withhold that motion now.
All right, so I think, you know, we'll end up tabling this until we hear from the attorney, but you've covered everything else. So we know pretty much where the cameras will be mounted, what type of camera, who is going to have access to what's recorded. The one in the hallway is video only, and the parking lot is sound and video. They run, and the one in the, it is not motion-activated, that runs all the time.
Right.
And records for two weeks, and then records over.
Right.
Okay, unless you want, and you can retrieve it. All right. So these are going to go on their laptops or their computers, and?
So effectively?
No access with a smartphone. It's like a ring is a smartphone.
Right, a ring. Yeah, I was looking at the ring. There was another one I can't recall.
Well, a ring, to my knowledge, unless they make a different one, is motion-activated.
Right. So I think all of these systems offer phone access.
But I don't think that's necessary.
I don't think that's necessary, no.
And again, the storage, they record over themselves. After two weeks, it's not?
Right.
Okay. So storage is not an issue?
Yeah. And you can set, you can set for how long I retain information, if you want it right over every day, or it would be just off the discretion of the office staff, because this is for their protection.
Okay. All right, so I guess at this point, we'll table it until we hear from the attorney.
Yeah, so this is Attorney Jim Carroll of Middlebury. I sent a message directly to him, being his secretary, requesting that he respond on this issue specifically.
All right, hopefully that'll be on our agenda in two weeks.
So if I may add, this, the discussion, because of the overlap, covered C and D of the business. So security at meetings and security at the town office.
What was that again, Brian?
What we just discussed covered both security at the meetings and at the town office.
It's the same, C and D.
C and D, the discussion is the same.
All right, anything else? I think you covered everything.
I think I've covered everything with respect to my communications and the meeting we had with the sheriff and Leamy, Constable.
Okay. We'll move on to E, recording Select Board meetings. And that's pretty much been determined, we're going to stick with this, or is this a format you're trying out?
At the last meeting, we discussed trying PEG TV and see if it works for us.
Yeah.
And that's what I did.
You did? Yeah, thank you for reaching out and taking that initiative.
I'm reminded that the recordings are the property of PEG TV and not the Town of Menden, and I'm told by the Executive Director that the recordings will be made available on their website, and they will have a link that they can share, that we can post to our Facebook page, or where we like the website. So all the meetings will be available to everybody via the link provided.
And do we know how long these are available once they are on PEG TV? If it's, you know, that's up to them, if they're storing, so.
Yeah, I did not ask that question.
Okay.
But I can find that out.
Okay, we're down to F, disorderly conduct ordinance, purpose and discuss. And thank you for sending that. Originally, I couldn't download it.
I have a copy for you.
I.
Oh, you have a copy?
Yeah, I printed it when you sent it. If I can find it, I'll give it to you.
Can I take time to introduce it? Okay, I'm ready. Okay, so the agenda says, under business items, F, disorderly conduct ordinance, purpose and discuss. The purpose of this ordinance is to curtail disorderly behavior as per Vermont state statutes regarding disorderly conduct, and also to provide some safety for our office staff and Select Board members. And so the Town of Menden disorderly conduct ordinance that I have drafted for today.
That one I don't have.
Okay. There you go.
No, no. I'll get it.
It's very similar. So it's very similar to, just in terms of precedence, it's very similar to the ordinance that's in effect in the Town of Fairhaven, and I'm told by town administrators there that they haven't had many issues with this, or any problems whatsoever. And I read through it and compared it to other ordinances or municipal ordinances on disorderly conduct, some of which Sarah Tolle has shared with me, and I found this one to be the most comprehensive. And also, it's based on the state statute of Vermont. It covers disorderly conduct. So it's, the Fairhaven one, I felt it steps a little bit far afield of the state law. So particularly, item G for the Town of Fairhaven, Vermont, disorderly conduct ordinance, which is available online to download, but their ordinance restricts intentionally causing public inconvenience or annoyance, and that's not actually covered under the state statute of disorderly conduct in Vermont, so I admitted that. But largely, the ordinance follows, well, entirely to follow state law to the T, as I drafted it here. The only things that we would really need to discuss are what the civil penalties are under Article V, and whether or not we would want to have a waiver penalty. And again, this is something that I had discussed, that Sarah Tolle and Nancy had discussed with Leamy Carter in terms of enforcement. There's still some enforcement questions.
You guys just wrote that down.
As to whether or not the Constable would enforce the ordinance if he weren't there to actually view the disorderly conduct taking place. And under Article, let's see.
It's covered, you're right.
Yeah. Additional enforcement provisions under Article VII, a law enforcement officer who does not personally witness the prohibited conduct may obtain from the complainant a written sworn statement giving specific details of the prohibited conduct and inform the complainant. They will be required to appear in court if the violation is contested. So this Article VII seems to imply that the Constable could issue a citation even though he did not witness said conduct, but that he could also give the complainant the opportunity to make a sworn statement otherwise, if they do feel so. Then other than that, it's more or less boilerplate ordinance material, as far as I can tell from reading other model ordinances and similar ordinances with respect to disorderly conduct or not. You know, in my research, I felt that a lot of the disorderly conducts ordinances held by Vermont towns were a little too vague and possibly unenforceable. So I'm attempting to avoid writing an ordinance that would be unenforceable.
Yeah, so that's, you know, one of the things I wrote down is the enforcement going over this, going over our rules and procedure, which covers this, covers a lot of it, but the question that has been going on in several communities statewide, including Select Boards and school boards, is when someone is out of order, who enforces it? If a Select Board calls someone out of order and they continue, how do you enforce that? So that's, enforcement is the big question, is how do we enforce this?
What may I add to that?
It looks like it goes back to the Constable?
Well, according to our own rules and procedures.
So we have, like, our rules and procedures, but then they never go any further where someone is out of order, is called out of order by the Select Board, and they continue to be out of order, who is enforcing, where's the enforcement?
But if I'm.
But the ordinance, I think that's what the ordinance is for, is there's a.
So under our, under our rules and procedures, Section D, number 7D, your final recourse for restoring order, Mr. Chairman, is to order the Constable to remove disorderly persons from the meeting.
Provided there's a Constable there.
We may have to call them.
That's true.
And then this is where Officer Fox said that we could also call the Sheriff's Department. My intention is to schedule a meeting with the State Police, see if we can seek further relief with them, if either the Constable or the Sheriff's Department are not available to help us enforce. All right, so, you know, even if we're not able to have the offender removed from disturbing the meeting, you know, the lawful meeting, we're still able to ask the Constable to issue a citation, which may serve as a.
Right. Or the meeting can be adjourned, but then your business doesn't get done.
Correct.
All right, so what needs to be clarified on this, obviously, is a civil penalty, whether it's going to be a waiver penalty?
Right.
And then, did you feel this needed legal review when you were going through it, or it's pretty straightforward?
I.
Especially the waiver, the fines, going to court, who goes to court? Especially the waiver, the fines, going to court, who goes to court?
I would feel that it would be necessary to have a municipal lawyer take a final stab at it, to make sure that everything is within the law, and to have the effect that we desire in terms of enforceability.
Right, so this one I haven't seen yet. I'll get a copy from you after.
This is
This is draft.
I brought this for you.
Oh, I'll send you.
I was going through this. And I had sent a copy of the draft to all the office staff, including the constable and the select board. So it should be in your email.
Just recently?
Right before the meeting.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure there aren't any blank mistakes.
So you follow Fairhaven's fairly close, about their, you have a police department.
So this portion right here is identical to the state statute on disorderly conduct?
Yes. All right, so you've got civil penalty, but nothing for the waiver penalty?
Waiver penalty is usually half.
Half, yep.
And
All right, that's if someone does not contest it, then
Right.
They have 20 days to issue the waiver penalty, okay?
I was just, I was just speaking with Officer Ricketts, Deputy Ricketts, who's present right now, and he said the civil penalty is set at 220. Is that correct?
Turned it at 220?
Okay.
So the waiver penalty may double, if not paid within 20 days of issuance of the municipal violation complaint. How's that go back to the civil penalty versus waiver penalty? So someone agrees to pay the waiver penalty, which is half of the civil penalty, and after 20 days, if they don't pay it, it doubles, is that what I'm reading?
So, before this, so if you don't contest, the idea is if you don't contest, and you pay it within a reasonable timeframe, then you can pay half
Half of it.
Half of the civil penalty.
Okay.
But if you don't respond, or you do contest it, and you lose that contestation, then you have to pay the full
Well, may.
Yeah, it may. And yeah, and if, after 20 days, if you don't do anything, it doubles.
The, after 20 days, it doubles automatically? Doesn't come back to the select board?
Not according to this.
Okay.
At this point, it's, it's a judicial bureau.
So should this be, well, or legal review will help with that?
Yeah. I'm not, I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah, okay.
So the town administrator just handed me the town of Westmore's Vermont Disorderly Conduct Ordinance.
Fairhaven goes back to 12 years?
2010.
Yeah. All right, so pending legal review
Sir, this one
And waiver penalty is half.
Sorry, can I ask the administrator a question?
You certainly can.
Sarah, was this adopted, or is this a draft?
Yeah, that's just on the website.
That's just on their website, so it doesn't have front, front of the document.
Which one?
Sarah, this one.
Where's this one? This one?
Westmore, yep. And there are civil penalties, $100 for violation.
All right, so you forward this one to, you know, we're talking about legal review, but you mentioned a municipal attorney to look at this?
Yes.
Could be our same attorney we're using?
The same attorney, so Jim Carroll of Middlebury specializes in municipal law.
All right, so I guess an motion is in order to forward the draft, Town of Mendon, Vermont Disorderly Conduct Ordinance, to Jim Carroll of Middlebury for legal review?
I would second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and you'll handle that?
I will.
Okay. Sarah, this grant agreement for signature goes back to, under business B?
That one previously approached on the Sir, you want this back?
All right, we're down to G, under business, legal counsel, advisement on disorderly conduct, harassment of town employees and town officials.
I'll address that. So again, this falls under municipal law, and initially, we were discussing this with Jim Carroll, and he, he had reiterated much of what Sheriff Fox had said to us about the enforceability of these issues. So, part of the problem is that, actually, a big part of the problem, aside from the courts being overbooked, is that a lot of what we're discussing here dances too close to First Amendment rights and open meeting law. And so the courts are reluctant to take on such matters
Mm-hmm.
Because the, and he explained to me that recently, the court had been sued for violating First Amendment rights, and making a decision to, I believe it was to keep a citizen out of the town office or city hall. So, and that was, that was an issue that we need to be concerned about. So, anything that we do with respect to disorderly conduct, we always have to give deference to First Amendment rights, always. So we have to be careful about that. And then I talked, I've been having a conversation with Jim Harrison, our state representative, and he has raised the issue to the House Judiciary Committee in terms of the enforceability of the laws. He had mentioned to me about the new bill that they had just passed regarding these issues, and I retorted that, you know, we have disorderly conduct and harassment laws that are not enforceable after they go to the court. And so he went to the House Judiciary Committee, and he said that they're not sure what they can do with legislation to increase the enforceability, so he's going to schedule a meeting with us and the state's attorney, who happens to be in Pittsfield. And so I get to back to Jim on that, but I'm busy right, I'm busy right now with things in the state house, so I'm expecting for at least me and Jim, the state attorney, to discuss these issues and see what we can do in terms of increasing enforceability in municipal offices, specifically with respect to protecting our employees.
The reason a lot of that was passed the last legislative session is not go-forward enough, or, I don't have a lot of information on that. It was addressed with the
Right, yeah. It was addressed, but I'm not sure that they, I'm not sure if they discussed the enforceability issue. Or I'm not sure if they're aware of that, it's difficult because of First Amendment rights to enforce.
Yeah, I think enforcement is, if that's the one that keeps them up.
Right.
All right, so you're setting that up. You have a date, or you don't have any date yet? It's just pending. As far as talking to
Yeah, I don't have a date
Okay.
Yet.
Yep, pending.
So, I imagine this, we won't be discussing this until the beginning of September?
Yep.
And then And to discuss any further on this, I move that we go to executive session.
Okay, so you want to state why you're going into executive session?
Okay. I move that we go into executive discussion, executive session to specifically address legal counsel advisement with respect to town employees and their safety, which involves discussing personal matters.
First, personal matters?
Personal matters, yep. Personal legal matters.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now moving into executive session.